Territory to show respect and understanding to those who walk this land since time immemorial. Today, we uphold our ongoing responsibility to work together in the spirit of the intent of the treaties with all the first peoples and nations that call this place home. The town expresses gratitude for the opportunity to build a better community on these sacred lands for generations to come. And now we will call this special council meeting for July 29th, 2025 to order. First item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Counsel? Counsel Reese.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move that we adopt the agenda, special meeting for July 29th.
Thank you, Counsel Reese. Counsel, the motion on the floor is that counsel adopt the agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? And seeing nothing, if counsel, please vote now. And that motion is carried unanimously. That will take us to section three of the agenda this evening, new business and 3.1, land use bylaw amendment number 1088, tac 21. CEO Panasik.
Thank you, Chair. I will turn this over to Ms. Walker.
Ms. Walker.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor and members of council. This report is before you this evening to seek a decision on whether to move ahead with rezoning 201 McLeod Avenue from RS2 residential standard lot to RM1 low-density multiple-family dwelling residential district. First reading of this bylaw was received on June 3rd, 2025, and a public hearing was previously held on July 15th, 2025 to hear community concerns. Administration is recommending bylaw 1088-21 receive second and third reading this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Counsel? Counsel Reese.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move that counsel give land use bylaw number 1088-21 second reading. And if I may speak to that?
Go right ahead, Counsel Reese.
I'm making this motion, but I will not be speaking in favor of this motion and would like to provide an amendment at this time.
Thank you, Counsel Reese. I'll come back to you for the amendment. Counsel, the motion that's been put on the floor is that counsel give land use bylaw number 1088, tac 21, second reading. And we will go to Counsel Reese for an amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move the council amends bylaw 1088-21 to change the zoning to P Park. And I'm saying that because we have a public hearing. Public hearing is an opportunity for our citizens to come and tell us what they think. And they really told us what they thought about McLeod Avenue. And I'm in agreement with them. I am. So I heard the concerns. I really felt the desire to keep this as a green space and to keep this area untouched. So thank you, sir.
Thank you, Counsel Reese. Counsel, the motion on the floor is an amendment to the bylaw to change the zoning to P Park. And Secretary, we're going to want to see that up on the screen. Thank you, Secretary. And Secretary, the motion on the floor is an amendment to change the bylaw to P Park, not to give second reading. So the part as amended, everything from as amended forward can be deleted from that. Thank you. And counsel, the motion on the floor is that counsel amend land use bylaw number 1088, tac 21, to change the zoning to P Park. Is there any discussion? Counselor Hawes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only question I have, I guess, is through administration, because currently, right now, it's not a park considered, it's a green square. But to put it to P Park, is there any, then, I guess, obligations on the town in regards to any infrastructure or anything like that that needs to be placed on that? Or do we need to change our master plan? Or how does that work?
CEO Panasik.
Thank you through the mayor to Counselor Hawes. There's no obligations to actually build any infrastructure on it regardless of the zoning. We have a lot of open spaces similar to this parcel with nothing on it. Whether or not that would be conducive with our municipal development plan or area structure plans, I would look to Ms. Walker, if you're aware.
Ms. Walker.
Thank you, members of council. Without having the MDP in front of me with the land use map, I'm not sure. Sorry. Okay. Minnie's thinking, she's thinking that it's not a problem, that we probably would not have to amend the MDP. But again, without seeing it, I can't recall.
Okay. That's fair enough.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Thank you, CEO Panasik. Counselor Hawes?
Yeah, other than, I'll be in favor of the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hawes. Counsel, the motion on the floor is an amendment, the counsel amend land use bylaw number 1088, tac 21, to change the zoning to P Park. Is there any further discussion? Can we see Counsel Chambers up on that screen now, please? Excellent. And while we're doing all of that, I'll speak in favor of the amendment. This Laurel Square piece of property, the community came out, was very vocal about it and very clear. But as I drive around town, I see that we've got these kinds of little green squares in a number of our residential districts, and they're beautiful. They're beautiful parts of our community. And I think that this strategic plan for infill housing development that council's been working on is, it's important, we need to find solutions to housing. But I think that this particular piece of land came up because administration identified it as a tier one property. And part of that is the fact that it had already been zoned residential one time sometime in the past. And it makes it look like, hey, maybe this is what the town wants to do. From our public hearing feedback, I can say clearly that I got the message that the neighborhood and the community does not want to do that. But I also look at, what's the difference between this square, this little green patch in the community and any one on Mountain Street or any of the other ones on McLeod? And the answer is, well, this one was maybe big enough for someone to think we could put some housing on it back in the past. And I don't think that that's really conducive for the long term of the community. I think these are really cool community features, and I'd hate to see this one disappear, especially given the love that the community brought in for it. So I'll be supporting this motion as it stands. Now, counsel, the Counselor Hawes, here we go. Oh, no. The motion on the floor is that counsel amend the land use bylaw number 1088, tac 21, to change the zoning to P Park. Counselor, or CEO Panasik, there we go.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I have pulled it up. In our municipal development plan, it is also deemed as residential. So at some point in time, we will have to amend our municipal development plan if that is the will of council, just to make sure our plans are consistent, but that can come at a later date.
Thank you, CEO Panasik. So counsel, once again, the motion on the floor is an amendment to the land use bylaw 1088, tac 21, to change the zoning to P. Is there any further discussion? Seeing nothing, we'll call the question. Counselors, please vote now. And that motion is carried unanimously. That, please ask the audience to maintain order. Thank you. And that will take us back to the original motion on the floor, the counsel give second reading to land use bylaw 1088, tac 21. And CEO Panasik, that should read now as amended. Is that correct?
Through the mayor, that's correct.
Thank you, CEO Panasik. Counselor Hawes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With the amendment, I'll be speaking in favor of the second reading. I do want to speak a couple of things, though, in favor, but definitely, obviously, the community showed some concerns, you know, with housing in that area, understandably. I do want to mention, though, one thing, because I listened very closely to our public hearing, and there was some mention on any green space that, you know, it may decrease the property value. So I took the time to do some research, and with research and municipal experience, it actually is the opposite. With thoughtfully integrated development, which incorporates safety features, accessibility, and community input, you can actually preserve or even enhance the property values and contribute to safer, more connected neighborhoods. So it really boils down to responsible planning. So with that, though, I heard the community say that that area is off limits to housing, and with it now being P Park, or potentially being P Park, you know, it'll stay that way. But I'm just saying that for the future, you know, and I have other things to say on other areas as well. But yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hawes. Counsel, the motion on the floor is that counsel give land use bylaw number 1088, tac 21, second reading as amended. Is there any further discussion? Seeing nothing, we'll call the question. Counselors, please vote now. And that motion is carried unanimously. Counselor Hawes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move that counsel give land use bylaw number 1088-21 as amended.
CEO Panasik, can you clarify that? Is the third reading as amended?
Through the chair, or through the mayor, yes.
Okay. As amended, third reading.
Thank you, Counselor Hawes. Counsel, the motion on the floor is that counsel give land use bylaw number 1088, tac 21, third reading as amended. Is there any discussion? Seeing nothing, we'll call the question. Counselors, please vote now. And that motion is carried unanimously. Counsel, is there anything further for item 3.1 on the agenda this evening? Seeing nothing, we'll move to item 3.2, land use bylaw amendment number 1088, tac 22. And we'll go back to Ms. Walker.
Thank you, Mayor and members of council. This report is before you this evening to seek a decision on whether to move ahead with rezoning 180 Chevyatt Drive from P Park, Parks and Recreation District to RM2 Medium-to-High-Density Multiple-Dwelling Residential District. Again, first reading of the bylaw was given on June 3rd, 2025, and a public hearing was held July 15th, 2025, to hear community concerns. Administration is recommending this bylaw receive second and third reading, and we're open to any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Counselor Hawes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move that counsel gives land use bylaw number 1088-22 second reading. And if I can speak to it?
You go right ahead.
Part of the process is, you know, we have to move forward with second reading. I will not be in support of second reading of this bylaw. Big reason, of course, is we heard a lot of public feedback during our public hearings and showed a lot of disinterest in changing this area to a residential. However, you know, I still have to say, you know, again, I hear your concerns from the residents. Though, I, as an individual, as a counselor and as a council, we don't take them lightly. We realize change is hard. But as a counselor, as Merritt said, this was brought to us in a strategic look at housing. And as a counselor, we have to look at, or I have to look at the big picture. And we're really facing some real issues. Housing shortages, aging population, businesses are struggling to find staff because there are nowhere to, workers to live. If every area is off limits to development, we leave our community with no path forward. So the goal isn't to ignore your concerns, it's to find a balance, growing responsibility, planning thoughtfully, and making sure Hinton works for everyone, not just today, but for years from now. So graciously, you know, I accept the fact that this area showed, people were opposed, but I really hope that, as a community, we consider other areas potentially, because our community is lacking in housing, and the demand is there, and we need to put them somewhere. And I realize there's been a lot of mention over the weeks, you know, why don't we build in the east of town or other places? We simply do not own those lands. Somebody else owns those lands. The east, I looked online, the east property that is for sale is raw land, and it's like three point some million dollars they're asking for it. And that's private land. So as a community, as we were to do that, that means purchasing that land and then, you know, developing it, which I don't see feasible. So I just wanted to say that, even though I'm not in favor of this area, it's just something to consider for the future, because I believe that we're going to have to have conversations for development in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hawes. Counsel, the motion on the floor is that counsel give land use bylaw number 1088, tac 22, second reading. We'll go to Counsel Reese.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will not be supporting second reading. And I too heard what you guys said and how much you care for that spot. I do want to remind you of something. Remember back in our first term, several counselors met at the scout hall, and we talked about your plan, your dreams for that area, how much you cared about that, and what you would like to see done to that area. I haven't seen that done. I would love to see an initiative driven by the community, you know, get together with the town and make something special happen there. Hey, you'll have a big plaque saying, "This was made possible because I pitched in, I pitched in, I did it." So, and if you do do it, maybe we won't see you back here. Okay? So it would be great if somehow there could be a community-led initiative, get the town involved, make that what you want to make it, so we're all proud of that area. And that's all I'm going to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Reese. Counsel Ostagh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm also not going to be speaking in favor of passing second reading. In addition to the concerns that have been brought forward by citizens, and they are valid concerns, both times that I've been on council in Chevyatt Drive, this piece of property on Chevyatt Drive has come before council for consideration for development. I've always considered it marginal because of the steep slope on the hill. I'm not sure how much value and how much developable land would actually come out of that. So that, coupled with the concerns that have been brought forward by citizens, are convincing me that this is not the proper property to support for development moving forward. That said, though, as Counselor Hawes said, we are at a critical stage in our community regarding attainable housing for citizens here. There are many citizens who can't afford to move here, they can't afford to live here, they want to stay, but there simply isn't housing for them. Rental properties, there's virtually none. We're looking at a suite of solutions to try and figure out how to get some more attainable housing for the citizens in Hinton. And unfortunately, developing currently vacant properties that are adjacent to services are the most economical way to do it. And that's just the reality that we're looking at. Properties on the outskirts of town, the development costs to get water, sewer, and other services to them are just astronomical. So by the time that's done, those properties are so expensive, people can't afford them anyways. So for this one, I am going to be speaking against it, but we do need to find some solutions to be able to get some infill development in Hinton to get some attainable housing on the market. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Ostagh. Counselor Chambers.
Thank you. Hopefully, everyone, can you hear me okay? Yeah. This one is a bit of a struggle for me, because I do see the potential from a location perspective, you know, proximity to schools, proximity to different things. I mean, I can see why this lot keeps coming up. I think more of the concern to me, looking at it overall, and after listening to everyone, is, you know, there seems to be concerns with the lay of the land, the slope of the land, runoff from the land, winter traffic, you know, all those sorts of things. So I too, I can't remember which citizen it was that came forward and said, you know, how do we prevent this from coming back again in a couple of years? And I think that's something that everyone needs to really think about in the community is that, you know, is this the right choice for us today? You know, listening to everyone in the community, the different issues, it certainly seems that it might not be the low-hanging fruit of some of the lots that we have and some of the things we can do. But I think as a town and as citizens, we need to look at, you know, what can we do to either make this a useful space through community group work or whatever that looks like? Or just kind of see what we do going forward, because there is a lot of administrative things that go on with, you know, this type of work, public hearings, et cetera. And I think we need to look at, if it's not this, what is next, what is the future of it, to be safe and usable and to the intended purpose that the community wishes. So I don't have the answers to that, but I, that's my thoughts for now.
Thank you, Counsel Chambers. Counsel, the motion on the floor is that counsel give land use bylaw number 1088, tac 22, second reading. Is there any further discussion? I'll speak to it myself. I will be joining the rest of council in voting against the second reading of this bylaw. This piece of property has come up a number of times. The community is obviously very passionate about it. I do believe that this piece of property is marginal. As Counsel Ostagh mentioned, it has some complications and some issues. I also believe that it's highly likely to get developed one day, but today's not that day. It's very clear the community is not ready for that. And any project that realistically was moving forward on that piece of land would very clearly need the buy-in from the community to be successful. And so at this point, I support counsel in a voting against this second reading. Thank you very much. So counsel, once more, the motion on the floor is that counsel give land use bylaw number 1088, tac 22, second reading. Is there any further discussion? Seeing nothing, we'll call the question. Counselors, please vote now. And that motion is defeated unanimously. Counsel, is there anything further for item 3.2 on the agenda this evening? Seeing nothing, we'll move to item 3.3, land use bylaw amendment number 1088, tac 23. And back to Ms. Walker.
Thank you, Mayor and members of council. This report is before you this evening to seek a decision on whether to move ahead with rezoning 190 Maurer Drive from P Park, Parks and Recreation District to RS3 Residential Narrow Lot District. Again, first reading was given on June 3rd, 2025, and a public hearing was held on July 15th to hear community concerns. Administration is recommending bylaw 1088-23 receive second and third reading, and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Counselor Hawes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move that counsel gives land use bylaw number 1088-23 second reading. And if I can speak to it?
Go right ahead.
When comparing spaces and hearing in the public hearing, the comments, it seemed to, this area seemed to have more, less feedback on it, and potentially more impact on the size of it to our housing shortage. So I'm going to be speaking in favor of Maurer Drive and the rezoning, because we do have the housing shortage. We also have a pivotal point in our community with the expansion coming of one of our largest industries in our community, our business owners. It's going to need, they're going to need places to live to expand that business. And, you know, this is a place where potentially that could be developed. We also are going to see the mine outside of town also expanding. So we are at a pivotal point. It may not be our community is going to explode in population, but there is an essential 100 to 200 people that will assist in moving our community forward. So that's why I'm going to be speaking in favor of the second reading of this area. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Hawes. We'll go to Counsel Reese and then Counsel Chambers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will also be speaking in favor of second reading. I remember back 2014, 2015, when that area was rezoned, and Lot 1 and Lot 3 were both taken up by developers. There was so much opposition for Lot 2 that nothing happened. People, you know, wanted to fly their kites and have picnics, do whatever on that one area. I didn't hear that opposition this time. I did not hear that cry from Maurer to leave us alone. So, and what everybody is saying up here, housing is critical. It is critical. And that is a nice piece of property. So I will speak in favor of this motion.
Thank you, Counsel Reese. Counsel Chambers.
Thank you. I too will be speaking in favor of this motion. I look at that green space every day out my front window of my house, and while it is used in some fashion, I believe that housing in that area and this narrow lot style of density has been done very successfully. It is a good parcel of land, again, close, within walking distance to many of the amenities that the valley has to offer. I think it's an appropriate place to continue the housing and with proximity to Mary Rymer Park and some other things in the area, I do feel that it is an appropriate rezoning and something that we should move ahead with. So strong support from me for this parcel.
Thank you, Counsel Chambers. Counsel Ostagh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll also be speaking in favor of developing Maurer Drive property. I think this is a perfect candidate for infill development in our community. It's large enough that it can safely sustain several independent dwellings. Services are right there. It'll be easy to develop. It's within a couple hundred meters of probably the largest developed green space in our community. Although the green space is valuable and usable, there is alternative green space within an easy walking distance. And in short, I just think that this is a great candidate for infill development to hopefully bring up our stock of attainable housing in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Ostagh. Counsel, the motion on the floor is that counsel give land use bylaw number 1088, tac 23, second reading. Is there any further discussion? Seeing nothing, we'll call the question. Counselors, please vote now. That motion is carried unanimously. Counsel Reese.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move that counsel gives land use bylaw number 1088-23 third reading.
Thank you, Counsel Reese. Counsel, the motion on the floor is that counsel gives land use bylaw number 1088, tac 23, third reading. Is there any discussion? Seeing nothing, we'll call the question. Counselors, please vote now. And that motion is carried unanimously. Counsel, is there anything further for item 3.3 on the agenda this evening? Seeing nothing, we'll move to item 3.4, land use bylaw amendment number 1088, tac 24. And back to Ms. Walker.
Thank you, Mayor, through to members of council. This report now is before you this evening to seek a decision on whether to move ahead with rezoning 117 to 133 Rowan Street from P Park, Parks and Recreation, to C Node, Urban Node Commercial District. First reading was given to the bylaw June 3rd, 2025, and public hearing was held on July 15th, 2025, to hear community concerns. Administration recommends this bylaw receive second and third. Open to any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Counsel? Counsel Reese.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move that counsel give land use bylaw number 1088-24 second reading, and I do have a question for admin.
Go right ahead.
So on page 16 of 27, it talks about discretionary usage. The multi-dwelling unit development, is that similar to what we're seeing at Happy Creek?
Be this similar to the Happy Creek development? This, we can either go up to four stories, or you can go, oh, just up to four stories. You can't go over four stories on this discretionary use, you're correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Thank you, Counsel Reese. Counsel, the motion on the floor is that counsel give land use bylaw number 1088, tac 24, second reading. Counsel Ostagh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to be speaking in favor of giving 1088-24 second reading. I think this, again, is a perfect location for the proposed development and rezoning. It's already a commercial district, and it's already a commercial district, and Hinton has a shortage of commercial land, to be frank. Developable commercial land is at a premium in Hinton, and I know that there are businesses who are looking and waiting for additional commercial land to be able to set up shop in Hinton. In addition to that, I did have a question for administration, though. Concerns were brought up during the public hearing about some of the previously developed properties and how those properties were encroaching on the Happy Creek Park. I'm pleased to see that since the public hearing, a bunch of work has been done there, and that encroachment appears to have been rectified. So I'm just asking if this passes and the rezoning is changed to commercial, and those lots are available for commercial purchase, is it going to be a condition of development that there is some kind of a setback, some kind of... of development that there is some kind of a setback, some kind of physical barrier to prevent encroachment on the Happy Creek Park area?
CEO Panasic, Ms. Walker.
Thank you, uh, Mayor and through to Counsel Ostachik. You are correct. You are seeing that, uh, the business there is doing some berm work. Uh, and they will be doing, uh, some fencing as well to protect the creek. That has been a longstanding agreement that we've been working with them on, and it just so happens it came around the same time. So, um, now, other than what the regular setbacks are for that district, um, definitely, uh, we will be addressing the creek as far as ensuring that there is a setback and that there's no encroachments into there. We would require fence, solid fencing for whatever business goes in for commercial. That's a requirement and that also will deter from, uh, from any encroachments or uh, debris or anything going into the creek. So we will be definitely, uh, keeping a sharp eye on it.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Thank you, Counsel Ostachik. Counsel, the motion on the floor is that counsel give land use by law number 1088 tech two, four, second reading. Is there any further discussion? Seeing nothing, we'll call the question. Counselors, please vote now. And that motion is carried unanimously. Counsel Ray.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move that council give land use by law number 1088 dash two, four, third reading.
Thank you, Counsel Ray. Counsel, the motion on the floor is that counsel give land use by law number 1088 tech two, four, third reading. Is there any discussion? Seeing nothing, we'll call the question. Counselors, please vote now. And that motion is carried unanimously. Counsel, is there anything further for item 3.4 on the agenda this evening? Seeing nothing, we'll move to item 3.5, land use by law amendment number 1088 tech two, five, and back to Ms. Walker.
Thank you again, Mayor, through to members of council. Last but not least, uh, this report is before you this evening to seek a decision on whether to move ahead with rezoning 143 Rowan Street from P Comm Community Services District to C Node, which is your urban node commercial district. Again, public hearing, sorry, uh, first reading was June 3rd and public hearing was on July 15th. And, uh, I'm available for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Counsel? Counsel Haas.
I'd like to move the council give land use by law number 1088 dash two, five, second reading.
Thank you, Counsel Haas. Counsel, the motion on the floor is that counsel give land use by law number 1088 tech two, five, second reading. Is there any discussion? Oh, Counsel Chambers.
Uh, thank you. I'll be speaking in favor of this as well. The, the Rowan Street hearing comments, I, I s- spent a lot of time pondering if C Node was the, the right zoning. Should we consider something more residential that was clearly brought up as, as a concern, but really the C Node development, when you get into it and looking at those discretionary uh, uses really could still potentially marry quite well with the residential district, but also give the community some flexibility within that C Node, um, zoning to not have to necessarily come back for changes on such a, a regular basis. So I'll certainly be supporting this, uh, after much consideration about is there a more appropriate zoning maybe for this? Um, I do feel that it gives us the most amount of flexibility and the housing that is, um, potentially permitted as a discretionary use, I think fits in well with what's in, in the area. So I do feel that this zoning kind of covers both bases and I'll be in support of it.
Thank you, Counsel Chambers. Counsel Haas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I will be in sport of it. I just want to have a quick question for administration on this, this parcel though. Um, with it being currently the recycling depot, uh, and, uh, there is a, uh, request by the emergency, Yellowhead Emergency Shelter for women to obtain that parcel of land. My understanding is with this passing of, of, of these rezoning, the intent is then to go to realtor and put these pieces of property up for sale. What would, in this particular area, cause it already is something and there is that potential, uh, that, you know, the, the request from the emergency shelter, um, how is that parcel going to be, um, in, in the mix of all the others that we've just passed?
CEO Panasic.
Through the mayor to Counsel Haas. So this one will be a little bit different. Uh, we don't plan on really doing anything with this parcel until a few things happen. Specifically, the extended producer responsibility that's expected to start October 2026. I think at that point, once we see how the new recycling system works, uh, what our needs are going to be after that October 2026 date, council will likely have a decision to make on what they want to do with it. Um, but it, it can continue as a legal non-conforming use as a recycling center forever. And we have agreed that we are going to provide services outside of what is required through the EPR program. So if we decide to continue those services in the same location, then it could just continue as is forever, or we can decide possibly to move, look, look at other locations, but that'll be a decision later on, near the end of 2026. When it comes to the, uh, the request from the women's shelter, the zoning that's being would fit within their request. Um, but their request really was to keep it until such time as they're ready. So, you know, no decision has to be made on that one either. But if council did decide in the future that that was what we wanted to do with the parcel and, uh, provide it to that organization, then the zoning will already have been complete.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, CEO Panasic. Thank you, Counsel Haas. Counsel, the motion on the floor is that counsel give land use by law number 188 tech two, five, second reading. Is there any further discussion? Seeing nothing, we'll call the question. Counselors, please vote now. And that motion is carried unanimously. Counsel Ray.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move that council give land use by law number 1088 dash two, five, third reading.
Thank you, Counsel Ray. Counsel, the motion on the floor is that counsel give land use by law number 188 tech two, five, third reading. Is there any discussion? Seeing, oh, Counsel Haas.
Uh, sorry, I'll be in favor. I just want to clarify a question from administration. You mentioned, um, the provincial program. Uh, could you just expand on what's going to happen at the end of 2026, uh, potentially, uh, with that program?
Specifically regarding recycling.
So, uh, through the merit of Counsel Haas, the, the extended producer responsibility legislation came out that said that the producers of recyclables are now going to be responsible for the recycled material. So councils made a decision to opt out of that program, which means that the, um, uh, the producers and much of the large companies that produce the recyclable waste are now forming companies that are going to be providing services to communities for recycling on the same basis as our garbage pickup. So in our case, we provide curbside garbage pickup. That means that in October 2026, we expect to convert over to curbside recycling. Um, that will be done directly by that organization. Um, so we don't know if we're going to have a, you know, a specific use and, you know, um, for a recycling center for people to physically bring all their recyclables to town. Um, especially because there is other options for maybe some of the surrounding, uh, you know, the county residents, there's other options available to them. So, um, you know, we do expect that that site as it currently stands would be significantly downsized with the exception of the few specific services that council has agreed to continue. Specifically toxic waste, um, and I believe it was, uh, other very specific recyclables, but but that'd be a very, very small portion of what that site currently offers.
Thank you very much for the clarification. Thank you.
Thank you, CEO Panasic. Thank you, Counsel Haas. Counsel, the motion on the floor is that counsel give land use by law number 1088 tech two, five, third reading. Is there any further discussion? Seeing nothing, we'll call the question. Counselors, please vote now. And that motion is carried unanimously. Counsel, is there anything further for item 3.5 on the agenda this evening? Seeing nothing, we'll move to item 3.6, reserve disposal 176 Chevy at Drive, and back to Ms., uh, CEO Panasic for this one.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, and I will turn this over to Ms. Peck, but I just wanted to add that, uh, this decision was mainly for that scout hall location and it just opened up different opportunities for a primary or secondary access. That was the primary reason behind this. With the decision of council today, we can still carry out, uh, this decision. And it's not overly consequential at this point. It is currently zoned P Park and we're not, um, we're not looking to rezone it from anything to P Park. So the designation, if we remove, remove the reserve title on it, uh, that location as well as 180 Chevy at Drive scout hall would all be P Park. Uh, currently it is, but there's also a reserve designation. Um, but the one, the, the one thing for council to consider is with this being a park and if we ever did want to develop it as a park or anything else, um, you know, there, we may need to look at this sometime in the future to remove the reserve designation if we want to look at, you know, a primary or a secondary or an alternate access point from that location. So we can do it today or not, but, or we can do it at the time when we're considering what we want to do with this parcel, but, um, with the decision today, uh, I would say it's more of a technicality and doesn't make any material difference at this point. But with that, I will turn it over to Ms. Sounds like I covered it. Thank you.
Thank you, CEO Panasic. Counsel Ostachik.
Uh, thank you. I'd like to move the council disposes of the reserve designation from plan 5662 RS block 13 lot R1, 176 Chevy at Drive. And if I could speak to it. Uh, I think it just cleans things up. It makes that whole property zoned exactly the same. It's all one piece of property. And at some point in the future, it streamlines things for if there's a access point in a parking lot required for a future park development there without rezoning. It's available and it can be utilized for that purpose without having to go through a rezoning or without having to go through a a reserve disposal and, and in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Ostachik. Counsel Chambers.
Uh, thank you through the chair. I appreciate the CEO's thoughts there. That was going to be my exact question is, is this something that we should just be removing for whatever that future use is, if it's a park, et cetera. Certainly we heard concerns about, you know, parking congestion access. Um, I think removing that, that reserve designation on this, uh, with it staying as park, uh, certainly seems to make sense. I don't know why we would need to go through all the administrative work again to bring this back when it's sitting in front of us today and it's in line with the other decision that we make. So I'm certainly in favor of removing that reserve designation. Um, just for future administrative clarity.
Thank you, Counsel Chambers. Counsel, the motion on the floor is that counsel disposes of the reserve designation from plan 5662 RS block 13 lot R1, 176 Chevy at Drive. Is there any further discussion? Seeing nothing, we'll call the question. Counselors, please vote now. And that motion is carried unanimously. Counsel, is there anything further for item 3.6 on the agenda this evening? Seeing nothing, we'll move to section four, the adjournment and item 4.1, Counsel Haas.
Uh, before the adjournment, I just have a quick question for administration. Um, now that, uh, two out of the four areas have been, um, uh, gone past third reading, what's the process now for those areas on Mauer and Rowan?
CEO Panasic.
Through the mayor, I will turn that over to Mr. Russo.
Mr. Russo.
Talk about being caught unaware.
Sorry.
So through to the chair, to all of council and community members, um, with the third reading received this evening, we will now go to an expression of interest that will solicit the interest of our realtors and for them to come up and tell us how they would be able to market this. I think one of the other aspects that will be very clear about in that EOI is to ensure that the market value of these properties are determined that is commensurate with what the adjacent properties would go for. Once we have that, we'll bring it back to council for your perusal and then we'll go forward with, uh, selecting the realtor or realtors to help us with the EOI and to market these projects. So that's really the, the next step. I can attest that we've already done much of the groundwork. So it's a matter of pulling it together and we could have that here with council still within your tenure of this council.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Russo. Thank you, Counsel Haas. Counsel Ray.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before we adjourn, I just want to say thank you guys so much for sticking with us, for being part of the public hearing. That was so important. You, you know, you are our stakeholders. You pay taxes, you keep this town going. So, um, I just can't thank you enough.
Thank you, Counsel Ray. Counsel, we need a motion to adjourn. Counsel Haas.
Make the motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Counsel Haas. Counsel, the motion on the floor is that counsel adjourn at 4:45 PM. And counsel can please vote now. And that motion is carried unanimously. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody in the audience for your participation and for coming up, being a great audience this evening. Have a good evening. Counsel Ray, or, uh, Chambers, I'll, uh, give you a call for our next thing. Oh, she's gone.